Good morning, it's 8:30, I'll call our meeting to order. Looking for an approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Haney to approve, a second by Commissioner Wayland. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Citizens to be heard, is there anyone wishing to speak on anything that's not on our meeting's agenda? And anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, approval of bills, vouchers.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Haney and a second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. September 4th meetings are in our packets. Looking for a motion of approval.
Move approval.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Haney.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our item number two is a request acquisition of a vehicle for the emergency preparedness programs. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Great, thanks.
This is Josh Ebert, our emergency preparedness coordinator for Clay Wilkin and the CHB.
Good morning.
So you can see our request is, you may recall that we had a trailer that we purchased with some grant funding. And now we have this opportunity to purchase this vehicle through the Sheriff's Department that has been made available to us. To help, we need something to pull that trailer with all of our assets. So as you can see, the vehicle is there, 2013 Ford Expedition, the mileage. And the cost of the vehicle is what the Sheriff's Department is requesting for us to purchase this. We do have money in our budget to make the purchase, so we're just requesting board approval for that.
Okay, alright, and this is not later on in our agenda, this is not one of the vehicles, Steve, that are, this is in addition to the eighth, that you'll be getting rid of that auction, right? This is a different.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Haney to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number three is a request to fill a vacancy for the office support specialist in our income maintenance unit, Rhonda Porter, good morning.
Good morning. Haven't caught my breath yet.
I always seem to do that to you.
Okay, I am here, we had a resignation of an office support specialist in our income maintenance unit. Actually, these gentlemen back here stole her from us, so she's going to be going to the Sheriff's Department. And so we are requesting to fill that position. It's quite critical to the work in that unit. They work right alongside our financial workers and we would like to seek approval for that position.
We will go through.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
By Commissioner Wayland, a second by Commissioner Haney. Just want to say that this is a 50% reimbursement from the federal.
Yes, it is, yes.
And you're looking for backfill opportunity as well.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, does that match both of your motions?
It's fine.
Okay, alright, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Alright, thank you.
Rhonda, can I ask you, while you're here, I copied you a letter regarding an issue with you, did you receive that?
Yes, I did receive that and we are following them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Alright, item number four is the approval of the Sheriff's Office 2019 vehicle permit. We have Mark Umtin and Steve Lansum, good morning.
Good morning, thanks for having us. Good morning. So, what I'll do is I'll give you a little backstory here of what, how this all came about. I know this is a little bit earlier than we normally order squad cars, generally we wait until January to order them. I got a call last week, late Monday afternoon, from the Holly Police Chief asking me if we've ordered cars yet. He explained to me that Ford is doing some changes to their plant here in 2019, February 2019 actually. And they're going to be shutting their plant down from February till about June, maybe June, it could be later. At which time they're going to be doing some retooling of cars and the price of the cars are going to be going up, the 2019s will no longer be available. And we will be getting forced into a 2020. And the price of the 2020 squad cars are $6,000 higher than the 2019s. They're going to be built on some different frames and things like that. I got ahold of a contact that I had right away down at Nelson Ford, confirmed all this information and she said it was accurate information. I requested some vehicle quotes right away from her at that point. Chief Deputy Lansum spoke with Administrator Larson and he felt that we should maybe run with this. We're looking to get eight squad cars in 2019 for our five marked patrol vehicles, three unmarked vehicles for investigators. We're also looking at two other ones that will be coming back to you here later in the years, but those are dodges, so the immediacy wasn't there. This is definitely an immediate type of request. The reason being is that we had to get these orders in, as I was informed by September 21st. It turned out that deadline was moved up last week. Fortunately, since I had spoke with Nelson Ford, they had just kind of put some blank orders in there for us to just kind of save us some spots to hold it for us, hoping that this would get approved. If you look at the proposal, the 2019 vehicle costs are $28,097 and in 2020 they will be I met with Auditor Johnson, these are the 2019 prices that we will have in January for funds available. I did give her the heads up of the price of the vehicle going up for 2020, so she's able to budget that as well. As you see, if we are able to do this now, the cost will be $225,211. If we wait till we normally would in January, we won't be available to get 2019 cars, we'll be pushed into 2020s and then we'll have to pay $272,820. So by moving now, it's a potential savings of $47,609.
It's a savings of a squad and more.
One entire squad car. Yeah, one entire squad car.
Do you know yet what additional costs it may be to outfit those 2020s? I mean, I'm sure you'll see increased costs and if they change.
Yeah, we don't know that yet because we don't know what they're retooling at this point. We're hoping that a lot of our inside equipment that we have, we won't have to upgrade, maybe there's some retro kits and things like that available. Usually if we go from, for example, 20, we went from a 2015 car, our 2016s, they were retooled as well. Our cages, we didn't have to replace, all we had to do was get some retro fits for a lot less money and it worked us fine. We're hoping that that is the same case here as well. But it seems like this happens every so many years.
Commissioner Wayland?
So they are going to adjust the internal service fund to reflect the higher costs in the future then?
Yeah, we're going to talk with Lori and have that adjustment made.
Yeah.
For 2020, 2021, that's when these prices will be in effect for our budget. So we'll try to adjust ahead of time for that.
And I did meet with her and just gave her the heads up when I got these 2019 vehicle prices and so she's aware of it, so hopefully she's able to make those adjustments in 2020.
Next year in our rotation, we're only looking at two or three probably marked squads, so it's a low purchase year.
Right.
Coming up, but that cost is going to be there for those.
I'm going to approve their request.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wayland.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Campbell, he also has a question.
So the, and I think you partially answered it, Steve, so these are the vehicles that would have normally been in the rotation for 2019.
Absolutely, yep.
And then you mentioned two or three, that those are going to be for 2020?
Well, this is where we have.
Are you talking about additional ones?
We have other squads that we're going to order, but they're not Ford vehicle, so they're not subject to these price changes. So we'll be coming back to you to ask for those additions that are in our rotation for next year. But the urgency of doing this now with the Fords as well.
You have any other questions?
No.
Commissioner Gross?
I have no question, do we have all Fords or why is it we were with Ford?
The reason we were going with Fords is because they were that much cheaper than the other brands.
Okay, so they are cheaper.
So now, they were. They were, but now they're going to be in line, more competitive on their end with the Dodges, with the changes that they've made. So that's why we haven't been purchasing Dodgers, because they were $5,000, $6,000 more as a state bid.
The Dodge SUVs were, so when you get to the car, the cars are considerably cheaper.
So Ford is planning on making cars in the future then for these?
They're not.
They're going to go all to Explorers or?
Yeah, they're not planning on making the sedans any longer, they're planning on just going to that Explorer.
So their police vehicle will be an Explorer then in the future, that's what they're going to make?
Yeah, I did hear rumor and I don't, it's just rumor at this point, that they might be bringing back the Ford Crown Victoria. And I don't know if they're going to do that or not, but the SUV seems to be the popular model from Ford and that's why everybody's purchasing them.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell?
I want to go back to your sheet here. Mark, can you show that the internal service funds and all of these things almost have the full value already in them to cover the cost of the new vehicle? So you're going to then also be able to replenish your internal service fund for the used cars, aren't you?
Right, we're going to be selling six. Well, we just sold one to, we just sold one to Public Health, we have another one that we sold to Georgia. I believe that's going to replenish roughly your own, probably $16,000 to $18,000 in internal service. And then we're going to be selling six more, but those funds are generally used for buying equipment, things like that. And then our internal service funds would get replenished by, you know, for the next three years when we have those.
Right, so you might have to outfit the new cars, so you can use some of the money that you sell from the other ones to do that?
Correct.
Absolutely.
But then the difference then stays in the internal service fund?
Any excess stays in internal service and I'll know more as far as what we have from our 2018 auction, because we have, this has been the latest year I can remember that we've still been working on squad cars, we're still waiting for one left. So we haven't been able to sell our cars at the spring auction, so we'll get them done here at the fall auction and then we'll be able to know what we have, the funds available to outfit those cars. And any excess would go back into internal service.
Further questions, discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, thanks also for being on top of that. Item number five is request approval to hire National Insurance Service Benefit Consulting for 2019-20, Darren Brooke, good morning. Good morning as well, Jennifer.
I always like following a department that's going to save the county so much money, especially when I'm asking for something. So thanks for having us today and what we're here to look at is hiring a consultant for our insurance services. The company that we're looking at is National Insurance Services. And to give you a little bit of background on this, this, we had an insurance committee meeting and we decided after we got that 14.9% last year, that we wanted to really start looking at our benefits and our benefit plans and how we want to strategically plan out our benefits in the next two, three, four, five years. And so because of that, we did a subcommittee, a sub-insurance committee, and we tossed out a lot of ideas, we had a lot of things that we brought to the, back to the insurance committee. And one of the things that we talked about is hiring a consultant, because they are going to have the assets that we don't. They're going to have the assets and the time that we don't. And so we looked at a couple of them and National Insurance Services came and presented to us. And from what we saw and their information that they gave us, we thought this would be a very good way for the, for the county to get the best bang for their buck for their insurance benefits. I mean, when you're talking over $4 million that we're paying out in insurance per year, we want to make sure it's right. Now, one of the, probably the questions you're going to have is, well, why can't we just do that in-house? We have and we can, but the problem is we don't have the data and the amount of benefits providers that Jennifer is dealing with, the amount of people that we have in the county now that are benefit eligible, you know, we have over 400 eligible people in the county that have benefits. And just managing that on a day-to-day basis, not to include all of the people that are, we're hiring, that we have to start benefits for, the people that are leaving, that we have to cancel benefits for, the retirees, the Cobra, all of that. And Jennifer is kind of a one-man show in that regard. So she's kind of at the operational level, making sure that everything is getting their benefit, everybody's getting their benefits and everything else. And so what we reached out to this National Insurance Services and they came back and gave us a lot. Now, what are they going to do for us? Basically, what they're going to be able to do is, number one, help us with our training and I see you have the information here that I included in your packet. And on the back page, it kind of tells you what they will do for us. And some of the things that we're looking for them to do is, they can look at all of our usage reports and give us quarterly updates on where we think we're going to be. The way things are right now, we have to wait until August, September timeframe to get our rates from Lake's Co-op. And with these guys, they can pull all of our usage from Blue Cross Blue Shield and then end up giving us a recommended or suggested increase that we will most likely see at the end of the year through Lake's Country. The other thing that they're able to do as our consultant is they are able to negotiate and bargain with Lake's Country so that we make sure we get the best cost and the best increase, you know. So instead of maybe getting a 2% this year, maybe they could have negotiated 1% or 1.5%. Just that a half a percent alone would pay for, you know, this consulting fee. And so that is why we're requesting this. The other thing is, you know, there's a lot of consultants out there and so what I did is I went out to one of the other counties that uses this consulting firm and I asked them were they satisfied with their services? There's work. And so this was from Candace Freeborn, she wrote me, she's the HR Director there for Freeborn County. And she said, "We do use NIS and have been extremely happy with them. They're innovative and very responsive to us. When I ask for ideas and new scenarios, they are wonderful about compelling the data and talking through options with me. They have assistance us in really turning around our insurance plans and have made the employees here at Freeborn County very happy. If you have specific questions you would like to discuss, please do not hesitate to call." So that's one of the things that, you know, kind of a little reassuring on that end. The other things that they're going to be able to do is help with open enrollment, they're going to be able to, when we're looking at our benefits right now, we're looking at at least a two or three-year plan. And changing some of the things, changing some of the county contributions and some of the plans to make it better suited for Clay County and its employees. And so they will be also able to not only run data and stats for us, but also come up and do educational and instructional meetings with the employees and us to kind of make sure that we have the best plans that we can possibly get. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Commissioner Wayland has a question?
Sure.
Would they be helpful in looking at transitioning to a paid time off system? Is that something they would work on?
I think they are mostly into the insurance healthcare business. That would probably be something else.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. You know, this, we didn't, this all kind of came up after our insurance committee.
After insurance. We mentioned it at the insurance committee.
Yeah.
And I also briefed it at the managers' meeting and in both scenarios, I think they had positive comments about hiring a consultant.
And I, you'd sent me some information on this and I think it's a good deal. I think it's something well worth doing. And again, anytime that we're going to get into a contract over dollars, I, you know, and maybe that's something that, whatever that contract looks like, we can have our attorneys review it to make sure that, and again, I'm looking more for, so if it's a certain dollar amount per year, that, you know, if you signed a contract and you're going to be guaranteeing paying them so much a year.
Right.
What are they doing? What are we going to get for guaranteed service? So I guess that's something to just back that up, I guess.
So is there potential that we could get, I see it says if the contract is signed this month, they'll start providing the services immediately? So that's two months.
Actually, that's a couple points, the attorney's office has already taken a look at this.
Okay.
I've already sent it down there. And also, yes, they will, the contract will start in January, but they will work starting as soon as we sign the contract. And so, yes, we're basically getting three months of service for free. I think that we will be able to use them a lot in the next two years. The nice thing about it is they have already been working for us, as a matter of fact. And the good news is, I just found this out last night, that they, between Lake's Country, NIS and us, Lake's Country has agreed to pay the $35,000 this year for their payment to the consultant. The reason for that is that they think by adding our minimum value plan, we're going to get enough families on that plan to offset the cost for this year of the consulting firm. So for this year, well, 2019 I should say, it won't cost the county the $35,000. And then for the second year, what they would do, what most of the time they do is they roll that into the renewal costs, which I figured is about 0.8%.
Commissioner Gross has a question, quick.
Do they, I don't know whether I missed it or not, but do they compare this to other insurance companies too? Like, I mean, the ones that we have now, they're going to see whether we're getting a good deal. Are there other insurance companies that we don't have that they're going to see whether we're going to?
I think they will look at everything and that's kind of what their task to do. Jeremy Kovas has called me two or three times already in the last two days, because they're a little bit worried about, you know, the consultant coming and we leaving Lake's Country. And so they're willing to work with us. I kind of told Jeremy that this isn't an opportunity to undermine Lake's Country, it's a kind of a three-pronged partnership between the consultant, the Lake's Country and us to make sure that based on our data, our usage rates and our administrative fees and everything, that we are getting the best deal from Lake's Country that we can.
Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, so this might be more of a comment than anything, but in a lot of discussions that we have, and I heard it again when I was at the AMC conference in Alexandria last week, that there appears to be counties moving to some self-insuring. And, you know, and I think they must be doing that for a reason. And I'm hoping that whatever these folks do here, they can also, and I know our former administrator, Brian Berg, was also, you know, one who advocated that we should be looking at that. So I would encourage us to also look at that as.
Yep, we actually have. This company, when we first met with them, they did an analysis of whether we should be self-insured or not.
Okay.
And, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically said that, they said that we're big enough to be self-insured, but they weren't sure that that was the route to go at this point in time. So I think, I think in a couple of years, three, four, five years, we should relook that and see if, you know, because our county's growing, our employment, our employees base is growing and maybe down the road that would be an option. But I don't know, you were in the meeting as well, did you get what they were?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, they do actually have a representative in NIS who specializes in looking at entities to see if they become self-insured. They actually are the ones that helped the Morehead School District become self-insured. He did feel that this might be maybe a five-year plan down the road. And so I think as we move forward with the consultants, I think that's something that we would on an ongoing basis continue to look at to see if that would benefit us, if we do know that was a direction that was given to us for the use of the district.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Questions?
Just as a note, we do have long-term disability with NIS as well, so we do have somewhat of a relationship with them as well.
For the board's question.
Make the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, item number six is a request approval to set a tipping fee for tree and brush disposal. Kirk Rosenberger, good morning.
Good morning. All the time, how this breaks.
No, good deal. You look a lot more presentable.
Well, I appreciate that, that's a real compliment.
That says a lot.
It does, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This should be pretty easy. This is something that's slipped through the cracks for quite a while for me. It's something that, we're providing a new service out at the landfill, we're going to be taking trees and brush out at the landfill now. The fees that we established are essentially the same as what the city of Morehead currently has. And we, you know, for out-of-county material, if we take any out-of-county material, obviously we'll charge a little bit more. What we hope to do with it, depending on how much volume we get, because we really don't know how much volume we're actually going to get, if we get quite a bit, we'll get a chipper in there and chip the material and actually use it out there. If we don't get that much material, we have to keep it for a while. A lot of chippers don't like to chip the dry stuff, so we'll probably have a little winter rolls out there after a couple, two or three years. So what I'm coming to you for today is asking you to set the tipping fee for tree and brush disposal at the landfill.
Okay.
And you're going to do it by pound?
Essentially, I mean, you can see what it is, it's, yeah, there's a, it's by loads basically, it's by the loads that they bring in.
Good.
Further discussion?
Do we need to try any type of chipping out, I mean, chipping out there or compost?
Mr. Chairman, or Madam Chairman, I always do that, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, we aren't doing any at the current time, we hope to be able to do some when we get more material out there.
Make the motion through.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
One other thing, just as long as I, you know, I can't just do one thing with you all. I had a very good meeting yesterday with a company out of Brainerd to actually recycle our mattresses and it's really, really pretty positive thing. We're talking about bringing a semi-trailer out to the landfill spot and, and essentially the charge is going to be, well, we're charging people right now for mattress disposal. So mattresses are just kind of a real pain for us to deal with out the landfill and if we can recycle them, it'd be a real positive thing. So I felt really good after we met with them yesterday, so hopefully I can come back and tell you that.
So Kirk, in doing that, are we, are we stockpiling them at the landfill then and then they're going to send them there or how is that going to work?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, essentially what they're talking about doing is they're actually going to spot a semi-trailer there.
At the landfill?
At the landfill.
Okay.
Load it into the back of the trailer. A semi-trailer basically takes about 110 mattresses.
Kind of keeps them dry too then?
Keeps them dry. Although one of the things that this company has stated is that it doesn't matter whether it's wet or dry, they'll take them anyway, so.
Do they round through a shredder or something?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, they run it through a shredder, they recover the steel, the recyclable steel, and then they also try to recycle any kind of, you know, fiber that they recover as well.
I do want to thank you, Chase, and Brett, last week gave a presentation at the Cass Clay Food Partners on the organics recycling and the anaerobic digester. It was a great presentation and it was good to see Clay County having a dialogue to reach out to any future partners and I think it was very well received, so hopefully they get some feedback on that. But thank you to your department and them for that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate it.
Yep.
Good news is always good news. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Alright, our next item is the budget update and approval of resolution 2018-33 for the preliminary levy. Good morning, Lori, good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you mentioned, today we are here seeking approval for the 2019 budget resolution. The resolution does set the maximum levy. The resolution does set the maximum levy that can be assessed to our citizens for the 2019 budget. The budget needs to be, the resolution needs to be completed so Laurie is able to certify our budget by the end of September. And at that point, here again, we can't increase our levy, we can only decrease it from here. We've, in our resolution, we have a proposed date for December 6th for our truth in taxation. Historically, you moved your board meeting that evening to the evening. I think statutorily, we can't have a truth in taxation piece until 6 o'clock. But we've combined those meetings in the past, so we'll be looking for that approval also in the resolution. Before you have, you have the actual resolution, you have the summary of the levy funds. But those, that data is what we went through in greater detail last week. We are proposing a levy, a net levy increase of 3.64% with a certified levy of $32,695,921. And so, as you know, through most of our departments, our staff, our fixed costs are our largest portion of that. And so you'll see a significant portion of our levy is attributed to that increase. And so with that, I would turn it to the board for any questions.
I have one.
Commissioner Campbell.
I have my question. Revenue is over expenditures from 2017.
Did you bring them?
I, yep, I had the, the sub.
I have brought nine copies.
Yes, no, they all have, they all have the copies.
So is this, so these fund balances, is this all cash?
No, no, these are just the fund balance, not the cash balances.
But revenue is over expenditures, so is what I'm looking for.
Right, well, that's, that would be shown, so if you look at the fund balance for 2016 to '17, the revenue fund had a loss of $355,000. Road and Bridge had a, had an increase of a little bit over $2 million, but that's because of the state aid road bonds and how we did the construction ahead of time.
But, again, Laurie, I'm talking about these, these are, are these fund balances that are strictly cash?
No.
But what I'm getting to is when we deal with our budget, we have revenues and we have expenditures.
Right.
And then how much difference was there between...
Well, and that's what this is. So, I mean, it's not necessarily cash, but...
But this includes other things other than cash?
Right, but so do the revenues and expenditures, because that could include depreciation and things like that. But, I mean, I can certainly bring that other form that's got a blue heading, that's got all the revenues listed and all the expenditures.
Yeah.
But I thought you wanted this one. But I could certainly bring that also.
Well, yeah, I guess I'd like to have that before we, I mean, I'm okay with this preliminary levy. But I think for the final one, I'd like to have that.
Okay, yeah, that's a problem. No problem.
In other words, it's, you know, when we, when, where I'm trying to go with this, when we do this here, we're asking, we're telling our citizens what cash we need to operate.
Right.
And based on the anticipated expenses.
Right.
So at the end of the year, I want to know how did that turn out from a prior year?
Well, not to show that on there, but, so if you just take the difference between the two, that, and if I bring the revenues and expenditure form, that will show the same thing, but it'll just show the details.
Okay. So, so then, so you said, so there could be depreciation in there. So depreciation is cash that never really goes anywhere.
Correct, but just for the enterprise funds, correct?
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Questions?
I have a question in regards to, not ours specifically, but the levy that we talked about last week, the approval for the HRA. Was, did the city of Morehead act on that yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Questions? What are the desires of the board?
I'll move it up.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve the resolution 2018-33. And a second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight is our committee reports. Commissioner Campbell?
Sure. On, last Tuesday, after our board meeting, we had a highway tracking committee meeting. And there was some, some discussion about changing the organizational chart of the highway department. We never came to a decision on that at this point in time yet. And we did, we did talk about, our highway foreman has left the department, of course, and he's gone to another department within the county, so we're looking at hiring somebody new for that. And of course, that prompted the discussion as to, is the, for the need to maybe look at changing the organizational chart. So that, more will come on that. But that was the, pretty much the extent of that. There is a county highway safety plan meeting that's going to be held on October 31st from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And that's, I think they're, they were looking at getting the LEC. I don't know if they're able to get that or not.
I think so. I believe so.
And that's, that's to go out there for. And that will be a public meeting where you can have all sorts of people, anybody who's involved with safety, whether it's law enforcement, ambulance, fire. There'll be a, probably, that'll probably be a pretty big meeting for that. Then on Wednesday, I went to Alexandria for the AMC conference, and I attended a portion of the MRC meeting that evening. And then Thursday, we had our conferences. And I, in the morning, I attended a workshop on economic development. And they went over a lot of things about, things that are going to impact economic development in the future. And they talked about what jobs might be at risk moving forward, jobs eliminated by technology and things like that. Were discussed, automation and so on and so forth. Then, then in the afternoon, I attended our transportation policy meeting. I serve on that, on that committee. And I, I couldn't stay for the whole thing, but decided to get back to more here for that presentation by the Core and the DNR. But at the transportation meeting, the primary things that were talked about while I was still there were the discussion on broadband. Some, for some reason, that hits every, every policy committee, including the transportation. And, you know, just for the public's awareness, on broadband, there was a goal by 2022 to have all counties having a, a high-speed rate of 25 megabytes per download per second and, and 3 megabytes per second upload. And they, that was kind of the criteria that they wanted to see all counties get to by 2022. And now they've, now they've changed that now so that by 2026, the goal is to have all counties at at least 100 megabytes per second download and 20 megabytes per second upload. And so statewide, right now, that availability for the 100 is already, it's at 73.66%. In the rural areas, it's at 58.99%. Clay County, right now, based on this data information from the employment and economic development, shows that Clay County is at 82.52% for the 2026 goal. So, so we're doing quite a bit, for example, Becker County is at 12.95%. Otter Tail County is at 2.38% of that 2026 goal. So from a broadband perspective, in Clay County, we're doing pretty good. And we're, we're still not there. And that's to the new goal. So, anyway, that's, I know it's not perfect. In some of our rural areas in Clay County, we know that. But we're, you know, and there's constantly work to go to get the funds to improve that, so. And then I did stay for the presentation too on turnbacks and the whole turnback process that's involved when you want to turn a county-state aid road back over to the state. And it was, to me, there was really no new information there. So, so then after that, I did have to leave to come back to Morehead, which then, that evening, there was the presentation by the Core and the DNR. And it was, I think the media reported there was 100 people there. I thought there was a little bit more than that myself. But it was good. There was good presentations by, by both groups. And there was, you know, the typical comments about, you know, I'm for it or I'm not for it. But I don't think any, any one of the people that spoke spoke to the technical reasons that they were supposed to speak to. So there was, but there, you know, there is that time that goes till the September 27th where people can, can comment on the study itself, on issues relating to scientific issues or what have you. So then on, then yesterday, that was, that was last week. And then yesterday, we did have our juvenile detention center construction meeting update. And that, you know, that's still kind of, where they're getting ready, they've got their foundations all poured now for the east and the west portion. The steel is supposed to arrive here in, in early October. And so you'll start seeing that, the addition portion of that, you'll start to see that coming up out of the ground next month. And then the LEC and Correctional Center meeting was in the afternoon. And, you know, the LEC, there's, they're kind of still just cleaning up some areas of paint and, you know, checklist-type things there.
Did they get the furniture issue resolved?
They, they, they got a response from the dealer. But I don't think the corrections have been made yet. So I think, but I think there's, there's a dialogue going on there and a timeframe to, to do it, so. Yep, and then the, on the, on the jail piece, I think all, everything is focusing now on getting ready for, the Department of Corrections is going to be here on September 27th. And that's going to be kind of a critical day. That's when they basically do their inspection to give their okay on, on the project. We are looking at having a, a, where we get, get the okay from the city?
Yeah, for occupation.
Yeah. And that is, when is that, Stephen?
We're looking for that, it was right around the 18th.
Yeah, okay, so that's, I mean, that's any, I mean, we could get it this week, I think, is what it was. Where we get the certificate of occupancy is the word I was looking for. And I think there still is the plan for an overnight stay. If you want to become a guest for a night over there, you can, you can do that. I think that's all being handled through our jail ministry is coordinating that.
Serving for food.
And I think, they're probably, just for you, they're probably going to have hot beef sandwiches.
I'll be there. Right in the morning.
But, and I believe the date on that was October 18th.
Yes.
Is the, right now, the tentative date for that. And, and again, the, the move-in date for the inmates is scheduled for the 22nd of October. That's, that's still the plan. And they did start the asbestos removal in the old LEC. So that, if you go over there now, you'll see a lot of parking spots that are kind of cordoned off and all that kind of stuff. That's what they're doing there. And then, then as soon as the inmates move out, then they can go in. And it'll probably take a week to do the jail side. So we'll be looking at sometime, you know, in early November then, that, that we could see that, the old building come down. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Haney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Tuesday last week, after our meeting that afternoon, I attended the special meeting of the Diversion Finance Committee. And they discussed the PMC status report on Task Order 3 cost estimate work. And they are going to have another meeting in September, and they'll be able to discuss the magnitude of the costs at that time. Basically, they're kind of running in place until the release of the report from the Minnesota DNR. On Wednesday then, we had a teleconference for the Northwest Emergency Communication Board. And we, we were not able to achieve a quorum, but we heard radio, reports regarding radio infrastructure, update on system administrator activities, reports on grant applications, various counties and stakeholders regarding the armor system. Motorola is the contractor for interoperability. The armor system is a $390 million system. So every year, there's going to be lots of upgrades and software changes and things like that, yearly to the tune of $30 to $50 million per year. And hopefully, the next time around, we'll have enough people for a quorum. It was made more difficult because that coincided with the same time as the AMC was having the opioid conference in Alexandria. So quite a few of the county commissioners were not present. And then on Wednesday, we went to the AMC Fall Conference in Alexandria. And I attended the, on Thursday, as Commissioner Campbell referenced, we attended the economic development meeting and discussed the broadband issues for outstate Minnesota. And then later on, on Thursday afternoon, I attended the Health and Human Services Policy Meetings. We got a presentation from the Minnesota Department of Health Commissioner Jan Nelson. He had budget proposals addressing elder abuse in nursing homes, expanding naloxine, naloxone access and delivery, preventing overdose in the American Indian communities, community prevention action teams, safe drinking water. And there's going to be a new governor, a new commissioner, and a new legislature this next year. So many of these issues are going to be postponed until after the election in the fall and the January inauguration. We also discussed healthy food, tobacco prevention, and designing spaces to make being active easy. And then on, on Friday, we had the discussion of the list of priorities for the Health and Human Services coming up. And the big issue is the sunset of the 2% provider tax that's been in place in Minnesota since, I think, 1992 or something like that. And that, that 2% provider tax brings in $80 million a year to Health and Human Services. And there was quite a discussion about how could we possibly oppose sunsetting that 2% provider tax. And, and we also oppose cost shifts on children's residential treatment. And we want to improve technology and eligibility for the system to be more effective and user-friendly. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
I also was at the highway tracking meeting that we had last Tuesday, and Commissioner Campbell pretty well covered that part. Wednesday, Steve and I went down to that opioid session at Alexandria. I guess what I got out of it mostly was the fact that they told us we got a problem. And I guess I sort of, that's why I went there, you know, and they told us all kinds of stats, how many are involved in that. But one of the interesting things that I found at that session was, they had a presenter there, and she was telling us about, she's on the task force, she's working for the, for that county, and she's on the task force and stuff like that. And she was telling how much difficult it is to find people, I mean, that your kids are doing this or whatever. And it was her own child that was doing it. So she was a pretty interesting story that she gave, how, what they do to get around being found out about opioids and stuff like that. So it was, that was a very interesting session there, you know, how tough it is as far as working with the opioids. I went to the MRC thing on Wednesday night and several different other sessions. And the main thing that kept coming up in all three, four sessions I went... sessions. And the main thing that kept coming up in all three, four sessions that I went to was dark stores. You know, I think some of the other counties are really starting to get concerned. You know, hey, they, in fact, they even got an article showing how much we spend already on dark stores, on lawsuits, on the lawsuits and stuff like that. So I think some of those counties are getting concerned. That's going to cost them some money, and they're going to lose some of that appraised value. So I think it's going to get, I don't know what, there's no plan yet what they're going to do about it, but.
Frank, if I can comment on that. You know, I've talked to some down there, too. And I, I think AMC, you know, they're talking about even maybe trying to organize something to have something done legislatively to.
Yes.
Because apparently that's going to be the best way to fight this, is to do it legislatively. So.
Right. I think that's the plan towards AMC and get something going to all the counties that.
Right.
We take this one thing, et cetera, each county filing a lawsuit or whatever, or.
Well, it's, it's county independently going through all the legal costs.
Right. Yeah. I think that's what they're, they were very concerned about that happening and stuff. So, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, in regards to that, I think one of the things that we, we heard from the President of the Minnesota Assessor's Office, and at this point, now they're working with AMC, but the recommendation at this point is to, to not move forward with legislation. They want to see how Indiana has, has imposed some legislation, and they want to see what the impacts are. But it certainly was on our, our list of, of opportunities in moving forward through AMC in the legislative field.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Like I say, I went to three, four different sessions, and everyone brought up the dark horse issue, dark, dark horse, dark stores, excuse me. Another thing that was brought up a lot was housing. And I don't think we have that problem in Clay County. I think we have plenty housing available, you know, for, I mean, if you go up to Roseau County and some of those counties, they, yeah, they got problems with housing. They don't have enough housing available for the workers, you know. So that was a big concern for some of the counties. But I don't feel we had, we have that problem here.
I think it's affordability issue is what we hear. I mean, there's, there's things available, but it's affordability. And people pay more money on rent than they would on mortgage. That's the problem.
Right. Yeah. So, and other than that, yesterday, spent most of the day some resident concerns and nothing scared my meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Wayland.
Now, let's see. I had the detention construction meeting yesterday also. And Commissioner Campbell reported on that. I attended the MRC meeting in Alexandria last week and had some good presentations on workforce issues and housing and some of those things. And then the rest of the AMC conference, I attended the Economic Development Session also, and that was very informative. And I attended the Public Safety Committee Meetings, which is my committee. And had some good sessions there, too. A lot of people from the Department of Corrections giving presentations. We had a session with probation officers explaining what a day of their work is like. And, and intensive supervision, probation officers have some interesting things they have to deal with. Let's see. That was it. And for me.
Thank you. Did any of the sessions at the AMC conference talk about the Minnesota licensing issue that we're having with our driver's license systems? I know that we had talked about wanting to have that as a priority. It doesn't affect.
Madam Chair, they did not. The, the potential governor candidates spoke about it in their presentations. But, but as far as the breakout, there wasn't, there was nothing there.
That'll be something we'll want to continue to monitor because that's been a significant issue for us especially. Thank you. Last week, I attended the Clay County Extension Committee meeting. We had a great presentation from the Master Gardeners. Big thanks to them. The grounds looked phenomenal. I know they did a lot of work, especially around the law enforcement center with Randy Nelson as well, planning the species of trees that would go in there. So they had a good variety. We also had presentations from the Clay County 4-H in regards to their programming over the summer. They had a, a lot of different programming with Morid Parts and Rec, Community Ed, New American Development Agency. They did some stuff with Churches United and the Boys and Girls Club. And also sent approximately forty kids to the state fair, which is, I was part of a delegation of eight kids. Those kids represent Clay County well. It's exciting to see the growth that they, they have. I then attended the Cass-Clay Food Systems Food Partners Meeting. I had mentioned during the solid waste item on our agenda that we had a presentation about food waste and possible organic recycling from Clay County. We talked about what other entities in the area are doing. Concordia College really does a lot to curb what the food waste is in terms of monitoring that and encouraging smaller portion sizes. Apparently, the thought is that twenty-five percent of all food goes to waste. So what are we doing with that? That's interesting. And had a community snapshot in regards to other issues in the, in the region. We approved a blueprint for the federal nutrition programs for farmers' markets to use those SNAP benefits coupons as well. So that, that is a positive moving forward. And that, I did, I am working with some community concerns in regards to some properties that the planning and zoning was working with. So more to come going forward there. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. I, I want to go back to my report regarding the broadband issue. I was trying to keep it short, but I still missed some things. So, the, the goal to reach the twenty-twenty-six goal that I talked about statewide would cost four-hundred-and-eleven million dollars throughout the state of Minnesota, which is roughly fifty-one point four-eight million dollars per year. And the two thousand and nineteen amount that this legislature has set aside was fifteen million. So it's far short, far short of what would need to be done on average to get to the goal that they've set. Then there's, and Stephen, there's something here, too, that there is a Fund the Border-to-Border Broadband Fund that's established, and that, and so counties have to apply for those dollars. So I would certainly, you know, hope that we can follow up with that. Just, if we haven't been applying, we should be. And then also, there is a Minnesota Rural Broadband Coalition that's out there. And that, that is established to both lobby for and resolve the rural broadband issues. And of course, Clay County would be, fall in that category of being in the rural area. And they, they were requesting that counties look at joining that coalition. And they were looking at a five-hundred-dollar deal. So I, you know, I'm not sure that I'm ready for, that we should be doing that. But it certainly sounded like it was a positive idea. I think we need to do a little bit more research on how much we still have left to do in Clay County. Part of the, part of the problem is, is the, the broadband is provided by private. And if they don't, if they don't want to do certain things, they're not going to do it. And so then, then it becomes, how do, how do you get somebody else to do it? And that's where it can become costly. And so that's kind of why, I think, a lot of reasons why the state is involved. But I, I'm going to give Stephen this thing, and maybe we can get a little bit more information. I don't, I think we should certainly research it more to see if it would be beneficial to join that.
Okay. Thank you.
And then one last thing. There is a, there is a Regional Transportation Forum that's scheduled for Monday, October eleventh. I do not have the time or the place of that yet, but I just wanted to get that up because I had to leave before I could get that information. And that's put on by the Minnesota Public Transit Association. So.
Thank you.
One more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Gross.
We also discussed the pill payments. You know, there's concern about that. The state of Minnesota now owns about eight million acres. You know, so that's a lot of tax money going, you know, that the counties potentially, if those pill payments go down.
The state of Minnesota or like?
State of Minnesota.
Forever in conversation?
All those.
Well, I mean, that's, that's where the confusion is, is because it's not the state of Minnesota, but.
DNR.
Pill payments go to.
DNR land and natural observatory, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, last Tuesday, I attended the Highway Tracking. I was covered in detail with Commissioner Campbell and Gross. I also had a personnel meeting with Darren that afternoon. On the twelfth, I attended the Opioid Summit with Commissioner Gross. I agreed, I think, that we were kind of looking, hoping for a little bit more take-home with us. They did have, in the afternoon session, they did have counties who were working on some additional programs. They kind of did eight-minute TED Talks.
Yeah.
And I think that it, my opinion would have benefited, benefited the group if we would have done that, spread those ideas out and address those all day rather than just give us little, little snippets. I attended the MRC meeting that evening. On Thursday, I attended the AMC Conference. Again, the economic development has been covered in detail. I think that one of the things they did cover, they highlighted the Barnesville software ITS Stonebridge is one of the, the benefits that came from, from their programming. We also talked about childcare in different parts of the state, how many places are struggling and the grant opportunities that are available. On, on Thursday afternoon, I attended the, the Environment Natural Resource Policy Group, talked a great deal on buffer zones, public drainage systems, recyclable materials, and aggregate, the aggregate task force. I think it was interesting, Clay County is only, is one of nineteen counties that has already had its aggregate. I worked through the mapping, and so that was a positive step. Friday, participated in the General Government Policy Group. Yesterday morning, I met with Darren on a personnel matter. I also attended a meeting at the City of Morehead with City Manager Volkers, County Attorney Brian Milton, interim County Attorney Pam Boss, and Chief Assistant Steve Beatlesbacher, in, in regards to legal, the legal contract or lack thereof with the city. I guess I felt overall that we had a, had a very good dialogue. I think we were kind of, in the past, we've been stuck a little bit. I think that the County Attorney's Office presented them with a, with a proposed three-year contract that would address some of the staffing needs that, that we've discussed. We also talked in detail with Chris about the intent that we needed to have an answer by the, by the fifteenth of October. She hopes to have an answer for us by first week of October, I believe, Steve, is what she, what she agreed to. And so I guess we're, we're waiting to hear from her. I don't know if there's anything more to add, Steve?
No, I think that was a good summary. I was, I was pleased that we had as much of a discussion as we did and as, I guess, I don't know what to say. I guess, I was pleasant, I, I was pleased that we, that we agreed on as many things as we did.
And again, I would just like to thank Brian Milton. He's, he'll be leaving for his, his tour this week. And so he took some time out to, to come to that meeting. It was very beneficial to have him there. So we appreciate that.
Commissioner Wayland.
I think, Steve, you had indicated there was some issue about negotiating something. And I guess I don't understand that. I don't think there's anything to negotiate. We provide the service at what it costs to provide. And so I'm not sure what we would negotiate other than if they want to pay us more. Because paying us less doesn't make any sense when we're doing it for, you know, the, you know, the work that's done is what the, the contract provides for. So, so I'm not sure, you know, what the, what the future holds. But I don't see negotiating as being one of the, the aspects we should be dealing with. So.
Yeah. The city has indicated, I think prior to the previous meetings, that RFPing was certainly a possibility. And we encouraged if they, if they thought they could get a better deal, that that is something that they should look, look to. So.
Well, and I, I support, you know, what we do here. I think it's a great service. And, and I know for a fact, you know, that the County Attorney's Office provides the best service that's possible for this, you know, kind of work. But, you know, I, I don't, you know, I don't see, you know, anything in it for the county to, I mean, I'm, you know, we're, we have no profit motive here. So.
No.
You know, we, we need to be paid for the services that we provide, you know, or else, you know, I'd say good luck to them. So.
And I'll keep you up to date with any information that I get.
I appreciate you continuing that dialogue. I, I also agree. It's, if we have documented evidence on, on how much a service is going to one entity versus, versus another, I don't think that's negotiable. And, and the reality is that those services are a heartburn on our budget, and they're a heartburn on other people's budgets. And that shouldn't be the reason that we can't come to an agreement.
If I can kind of.
Commissioner Campbell?
You know, this is, to me, this is a classic example of how we, how we need, need to come together. Our, we, we share constituents, and we all look for collaborative efforts. And, you know, and I, I think, you know, I listened closely to what Commissioner Wayland said, you know, because in his job before this, he was a police chief, and he was involved with an awful lot of the areas and the cases that end up, that are city cases that they'd otherwise have to do. And it, and it seems to me that asking for, you know, just a reimbursement for the actual costs that have been done isn't, you know, it's, it's, you know, it should be an easy thing to do. And so it, it becomes a matter of if, if they feel they can find it, a better deal somewhere else. But I, I question whether they could ever do that. And, you know, so I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that this will work itself out.
I think we did lay out some, some good examples. It's not just about taking the, the cases. It's the continuity. It's, it's not the cases that come here to court even. It's the estimated twelve-hundred citations that, that don't come to court, but our staff still take care of that. They also are able to utilize their victim witness programs that they would have to duplicate outside in another contract. And so I think that we, we laid out a very, very good, very good reason for them to continue with the services.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that one?
I just had a couple more things to add. I also attended the owners' meeting for the jail, the Juvenile Center in the LEC. I think we're going to have Julie come in here in a couple of weeks just to kind of give an update on that. And.
On the transition.
Yep. And just to comment, I think, on Jenny's, Commissioner Mojo's, comment about the grounds here. Yesterday, the STS crew went over and picked, handpicked all of the weeds over at the LEC. So when we talk about the, the STS crew and the value that they bring, again, that was a nice thing. And lastly, I'd just like to, to cover, a number of our departments have been receiving questions about hunting up in Old Port. And with the annexation of, of a portion of Old Port from up to seventy-eighth, Seventy-first Avenue North to Highway seventy-five, that's now covered in the City of Morehead. And so if citizens have questions, the supervisor on duty at the Police Department is, would be able to answer their questions. So.
Okay. Any other questions?
That concludes, concludes my report.
Anything else?
I do want to note, November first is the deadline for the buffer implementation. And so we're going to try to get a buffer law committee meeting the first week of October, just between SWCD and the planning and zoning, to make sure we're all on board with, and Highway to talk about that implementation. And then, as note, we also have the Small Cities meeting on October first, scheduled from four to six. Is there anything else?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You had asked earlier about Morehead's action on the HRA levy. And.
Oh, thank you.
Ron DePorter contacted me to say that they did approve it last night at their meeting.
Okay. Okay. Good to know. Thank you very much. Anything else? All right. We are adjourned.